All right, please stand and... For the pleasure.
My apologies, Mr. President. I'm in the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we opened the meeting at 7:10. And roll call?
Pam Dooley is absent. Robert Urega is absent. John Klarin?
Yeah.
Alex Brithely? Alex Broxow?
Here.
Rich Young?
Yeah.
For Chief is absent. Bob Sapolsky?
Yeah.
Donnie Millik?
Yeah.
Matt Bones absent. Looks like our building commissioner-
He's saying he's absent. He texted me.
He what?
He texted me and said he's absent. They're not back from Lafayette.
Okay, and Dunn is here.
Yes, Steve Thomas.
Okay, and Jeffrey Gunnings on his way. I'm here.
Ray.
Ray's not a president.
That was the white ditch.
We have, but we have... Matt Bone is the one that should be here because he's the president. That's why he's listed on the roll call.
But Ray is there on the white ditch.
But Ray Doe brings us down on the list for the VZA. Did you want him on there for anything else?
He's on there for white ditch.
Yeah, I could put him on there for white ditch. I don't care. I could put anything on here you want. King Ray, you're here for white ditch.
Here you go, Ray.
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the July 9th, 2019 council meeting minutes?
Or you've got to wait till Rich gets the corrections on it?
I make that motion.
I second it.
You didn't find any corrections?
No.
Wow.
Can I go home now?
No.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Who made the motion? You did, who seconded?
I did. Now we come to clerk treasurer's report.
Yeah, it's a little lengthy. I don't know who I'm going to get to sign this. You, Joe?
I suppose.
Are you kidding me?
I'm here.
We need a little music, however.
Pardon?
We need a little music.
In between?
Joe, where to sing?
Start the mail over there. Okay, guys. Where do I have them here? We'll do the May 1st first. May 2001, which was the additional appropriation, which was only one additional appropriate, not additional appropriate, additional voucher. And that was for NIFSCO. This is three. While you pass them out, I will read them. The NIFSCO for heat for the garage. This is for May was $63.70. Electricity for the garage, $32.32. Electricity, I'm sorry, that was for the streetlights. Electricity for the garage was $37.57. For grand total, $133.59.
Move that we accept the $133 vouchers for May?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And we had no additional claims for July. I need signatures on this.
That's all right, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good.
It's hard to bend that law when you get to stage. Oh, Dolly. I thought you bent it and get it. And it's a lot of collapse. And, uh... Thanks for the information.
Cough up the store.
Pardon?
This side is going to be coughing up a storm.
Sorry, Bob.
You need meds.
Sardine?
Joe, did you say that I know July?
No, no, July additional minutes. It says no July additional claims. Just what it says on the agenda. I do have office claims. And they're not cheap. Do you have a paper here, boy? There's two sheets each. You cannot stay one together. There, I think, works alright. Very well, thank you. I'll go ahead and start reading. You're mostly on top of the same as we have every month. Miss Shanna Shores volunteer fire department, The fire department for rental, $105. Town of Long Beach for fire protection, or police protection, $4,597. Republic Services for a refuse pickup, The Grounds Guys for mowing the park, nine times between 12 and office the 7th to 9th, $900. Riverbend, I'm sorry, Moy, the White Ditch, the Grounds Guys, $500. Grounds Guys, which is also Sandcastle, by the way, if you're not familiar with it. And that was for doing cleanup of fallen branches and trees in White Ditch, $350. Jeffrey Gunning, $13.40 for reimbursement of postage on the Eureka case. Jeffrey Gunning for legal services for the first half of 2019 on the Eureka case, Jeffrey Gunning for legal retainer for the second quarter, $1,500. Shell oil for $46.26 for fuel for the morgue. Department of Waterworks, $9.49 for water for the garage. $9.49 for water for the park. For Brenda Heckman, for $41.76 for her July travel back and forth to the bank and the post office. Office depot, $122.33 which is being charged to the White Ditch Repair and Corridor Restoration Plan. And that was for the printing and for the update for our meeting that we had on January, July 26. Comcast for $66.90 for internet. Applied Ecological Services, it's broken down into three different channels. And one is for the site visit where they checked out everything on the site. And that is for the east side of the bank, the territory of east side of the bank. And that was for $1,910. For the actual design, which they came up with was $4,790. And for the presentation meeting and what was involved with all the different things. And that was $2,140. We come up with a grand total of $25,676.01.
Any questions on this report?
Yeah, I have one. Applied Ecological Services, is that money come out of the grant money?
Yeah, that comes out of the grant money.
All right. Any other questions? So, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
And I need some signatures, guys. Do you? I'm better at that one. I have one more voucher that I'm about to put on here. And that's the payroll taxes.
Hello? Hello? Who's this? Mr. Drew, so I'm in the meeting council. Can you call me in about two hours? All right. Call me back in about two hours, okay? Sorry, this former student, my-
Two hours? I mean, hour.
Well, just to be on the same side. Now, you gave me only two of those.
No, there's another one right there.
Five.
Okay. Now, we have the taxes that we, that were withheld from the gym payroll, which we have to turn around and pay on the plan in the state. And for the IRS, there was a total of $2,024. And for the state, we had to send in for $194.10 for a grand total of $2,494.34.
Any questions?
Move that we accept this voucher request?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have two seconds on me?
Yeah, I'll switch with you.
You're late.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, but it's Mr. Gary right here.
He can get a vote on it.
He didn't vote on the charter.
Okay. The next on the agenda that I have is the DNR White Ditch Bank Stabilization Phase. We have a request proposal, which we would like to send out starting tomorrow to get some bids on the actual plan to stabilize the bank. Called White Ditch Restoration Plan. I did not give everyone a copy because it's not for publication till we send it to the contractors to give bid. But to give you some history on it, in the comprehensive plan, there's a section that states the major existing undeveloped area within the town includes that bordering White Ditch. This area was singled out in the comprehensive plan of 1982 and recommended for development and park area. The present opinion survey strongly indicates that this goal should be pursued in the form of restoration of the stream and incorporation of facilities conducive with a park-like atmosphere. That was the original plan. And it's also in the 2016 comprehensive plan. Implementing the plan, it would be reconstruction and stabilization of the White Ditch. The part... It was discussed with the Newport County Drainage Board and staff from the Indiana Lake Michigan Coastal Program. They're assembling, they are, I mean, to implement it, we have to assemble grant information and buy for funding, which they did. And once the funding was secured, the end design, now we're ready for the RFP, which is the Request for Proposal. And I need your vote on it. Any questions on it?
This is to do the actual job?
To do the actual job, just like it is from, it's listed as phase two because they want it done the same way that we have Oakdale to, not Oakdale, the El Porto to Oakdale. And this will be from Oakdale to the southwest edge of town.
Well? May I move that we send out those proposals?
Okay, and before I forget it, Newport County is going to provide some of the, so the 50-50 grant and some of it is being provided by Newport County. They did not give us a definite amount that they would apply towards the 50% that we have paid.
But we'll find out what the proposals are.
We can, or maybe Ray can find out from the Drainage Board because that's where the money will be coming from. You know, if they come up with a figure that they will help us, you know, 50%. And if they put any caveats on it, like they did the original one, which we have 20 years to maintain the ditch. That was only for 20 years. They may do the same on the place when I don't know, but maybe. They did say they would help.
Okay.
We just didn't have a dollar amount. Okay.
So?
So you're going to go now?
I made a motion.
Okay, Rich.
All right. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes.
Yeah, this one has four ayes.
There's a table and the next thing.
Oh, my goodness, there sure is. I was in a hurry, you can tell that.
So who?
For everyone here, the Job Description Committee. As far as I know, nobody's met on it.
Not yet. Okay.
We'll have to come up with a meeting date.
And now we come to the reports. Chief Sikowski?
Month of July. It's 470 dispatch calls. We walk in, we drove 7,609 miles. Full hour's work is 821, 77 hours of overtime. 74 hours of that is for 40 July. We control three hours for the parker business. Reserves, 150.5. Traffic stops in Shanna Shores, 12, two citations, two liquor warnings, nine roadblocks. One suspicious subject, one suspicious vehicle. My courtesy service, one ordinance violation. Three hours. General report, there was a fraud report.
Any questions, Chief? Thank you, Chief.
I have it, he doesn't. You don't have any report from the Fire Department, do you? Okay, I'll let you read it then.
Now?
Yeah.
That next?
That's the next.
All right. 174.83 hours for the month. Meetings, we called at the station. 7:10 was a general meeting, 17th training meeting, 24th truck maintenance. Public relations on the 4th, they did the Michigan, Michigan parade. Special training, we had a special training with Long Beach on the 31st to lower pre-plans of Bill Beach Inn. Calls for service, there was 13. On the 5th, Seminole Trail for Lion Town. On the 6th, Potomac Trail for Gatsby. Also on the 6th, Potomac Trail for medical. On the 7th, Market Trail for fire alarm. On the 7th, Boone Ridge Drive for a medical call. On the 8th, we assisted sprinkler with a structure fire on 800 Morris. On the 11th, a medical call on Miami Trail. On the 13th, Michigan Drive for CO detector. On the 17th, Miami Trail for medicine call. Mohawk Trail on the 19th for medical call. Also on the 19th, Litcher Drive for medical call. 21st, Town High Trail for medical call. 21st, Grand East Road for fire alarm. On the 28th, Arrowhead Trail for a medical call. It's not a little good.
Lot of sick people around.
So, Michigan Shores, there were gun fires, one first responder call. Michigan and Michigan, there were two fire calls and three first responder calls. The other one, there were two fire calls and three first responder calls. Mutual named fires, there was one and for medical callers, two.
Any questions?
Do we get a cheaper rate if there wasn't hardly anything? Do we get a cheaper rate if there wasn't hardly anything for Michigan Shores?
Thank you, Chief. Building Commissioner is not here.
Yes.
Yes?
Steve Thomas did text me and asked me to present that, I guess he signed off on a contract for the Kruger Swimming Pool.
For what?
Kruger Swimming Pool.
For swimming pool.
That's all I know. That's what he texted.
Okay, thank you. Donnie Millik, please. Parking records.
Our catalog comments in the mail have been hidden. And they enjoy, a lot of people enjoy our program. So they're together, they're together.
That was nice, wasn't it? We found out what was going on with the grants.
And they all enjoyed the whole program. They said it was really nice and everybody seemed to like it. And we've got it for $3,270 donation so far.
All right.
The people were the-
Thank you, Donnie Millik. Road Commissioner?
Throughout the 17 hours of work for the month, we had a couple trees down and mowed. We also had to widen Chippewa between Oakdale and Greenwall in anticipation of the growth. There was some trees and some bushes that had to come out. Community crossings grant, nothing will be new on that. We get the paving done, which I talked to Reason Byron yesterday. And he's trying to get it on the schedules.
How does they do? How do they do the bidding on that? How do they do the bidding? Did you have to send out for a Request for Proposals? Or is that you did? You have on?
I used the same letter that you typed up before.
Okay.
Change it.
So you got that data?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
The status of the tree report, I have no status. It was left up to the council at the last meeting to figure out what they wanted to do.
Well, thank you, Bob.
Did we find out about the license plates and insurance in stop?
Supposedly, Joe says everybody's got insurance.
Well, the two that I have, one is Maple City and the other one is Sandcastle Landscaping, DBA Grounds Guys of Michigan. I have their insurance certificate so either one could be considered. And I think you still have your proposals that was given out before, do you not?
Yeah.
Probably you do, you do.
Yeah, yeah, Bob.
Okay. So there's Maple City was for $6,875. And the one for Sandcastle Landscaping was for $4,000. Now, we're sure that these are all on the right of way, right? That they're not on private property?
Yes.
They're not over 10 feet? More than 10 feet off the right of way? I mean, off the roadway, okay. Did you look at that one that was on Oakdale?
I can't see which one you're talking about.
One of these days, I'm going to have to ask you out for lunch and have to take you right down the street to show you where it is.
I'm just trying to remember where.
No, I put either one, so you're out of luck. If you go to the top of Oakdale in Oakdale at the hill, if you go right, you go to your son's house. If you go left and look on the right, it's about 30 feet down. It's covered with vines, dead, and it's hanging over the road. And that dead limb's been hanging there for a year now. I'm just waiting for it to come down.
But it's 30 feet off the road?
No, no, 30 feet down the road.
Oh, from Oakdale?
From Oakdale. Just about 30, 35 feet down. If you can't find it, I'll take a picture of it.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the lower bids. That's our job to save the town as much money as we can.
Yeah, yeah.
And hire Sandcastle or whatever they're called.
They're at Sandcastle doing business ads.
Well?
Am I going to withdraw from supervising this project?
That's okay, we can get somebody else.
I'll come.
I refuse to work with an individual.
All right. Okay, so we have settled that point?
No, we don't. We didn't vote on it, did you? So you didn't get a second?
There's no second yet.
There's no second. Rich made a motion?
I did, I did second.
You seconded it?
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
We got a tie.
So the clerk treasurer votes?
Yes.
So, three, yes and two no's. Okay, Plan Commission, Mr.-
Non-resolved.
Now, you have to have someone that's going to be supervising the job, so. Bob does not want to be part of it. So we'll have to find someone to supervise.
Any suggestion?
Can you keep an eye on it? You just to make sure he does the trees he's supposed to be doing?
I don't have a list of them.
I give you a list.
We also talked about a time frame, so this could be done by two.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, you can do that. It's out of time for you.
All right, Plan Commission?
We met last Tuesday.
You didn't set a timeframe. You going to set a timeframe or not? That he has to have it done in two months or three months or whatever? And at the same time, do you want to vote on Rich supervising?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
That would be for, if you don't have a- That would be for, if you don't have a full...
What?
He made a motion to give the bid to Sandcastle.
Right, and we voted.
Okay, now you're voting on, you need it for the timeframe and for Rich to supervise.
Yeah.
You can do that all in one, what kind of timeframe do you want? And you can make that all in one motion.
By October 1st?
By October 1st, Rich has supervised and had the work done by October 1st.
Alright.
We need a second?
I seconded it.
John?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those say yes?
Aye.
Yes, I vote yes.
So, three?
You said aye, Nancy.
Huh?
No. No, I say nay.
Alright, so when there's a tie, the Clerk Treasurer?
Clerk Treasurer does, I've been on voting yes on both of them.
Okay, very good, so we come to the Plan Commission.
We met last Tuesday, I believe you were all there, and, uh, we had four requests for pre-approval for permits, and we approved one, uh, it was an addition of a garage that could be under, not under the house, but where the other garage was. We conditionally approved one, uh, a man's coming out of Chicago, wants to retire, wants to build a manufactured home, didn't really own the property, it was all in the contract, so Steve will take care of the conditions. The third one was, uh, a man who wants to add on a garage and a structure on his house above the garage, but he wasn't, but, uh, he didn't have all his plans, so he's gonna come back next month, and then that brings us to Good Old Day and Coffee, who lives here, and, um, he was shut down pretty quick because he was proposing a house that did not have 1,200 square feet on the ground floor, which is a requirement, um, in a town, so he was advised that he needs to go to BZA, but there's an awful lot of, uh, law interpretations that we needed to make, David goes that far.
Where is their location?
Keep in mind, he lives in...
Poppy on Popham.
Yeah.
After that, it was almost 9 o'clock, uh, there was a suggestion, we put together a guide, but we, Dorothy brought out a chart that we used to have, uh, to give to people who wanted to, uh, apply for permits, so...
That's excellent idea.
We're gonna edit, look that over, I guess.
I can't tell you how many times I've been asked if we have a plan for someone applying for a map for a building.
And then, a lack of good DNR and FEMA maps was discussed, and Ray, as one of our members, opposed to the, why, do you want to go on computer or?
No, no, we're gonna...
Anyway, Ray's gonna try and get those new maps.
What did you get, new map?
It's a flood map.
It's a flood map?
Yeah. There's two, I think, one's the whole state, I think.
I requested one of them some time ago because I couldn't do it on my computer, you know, you get a blue one.
So basically, I mean, last week, it's all taken up by these requests. Let's go. And Dr.
Well, thank you, Mr. Young. Uh, now we come to the BZ.
The next meeting is, uh, it's kind of Thursday, but there's nothing on the agenda as far as...
Alright, thank you, and now it's still your turn. With the white...
The drainage board, we presented a, uh, either, first of all, nothing that affects Michigan Shores, or the, the, you know, white ditch that we are responsible for, but notifying the, the drainage board that in the area that they are responsible for, uh, there are a couple of trees down, there are a couple of logs, nothing blocking the flow of waters at right now, and then there are also two trees down in the jungle path that I walked today.
Where? Not in our park.
Not in our park, but from Oakdale, from Oakdale going to the, uh, Michigan Shores.
Michigan.
Right, so notify that, they will be investigating. Now, in the, in the part, this is not, uh, but in the part that we are responsible for, that in these, there are a couple of branches, trees down, again, nothing affecting the flow, but potentially could, so we need to perhaps...
I think that was what Nick was doing this afternoon.
Okay, I walked it this morning.
Yeah, he was there this afternoon and gave me a bill, that was for the, was it $350? Is there more than that there?
Well, you know, there, there are a couple of trees that are, I don't know what he did, and I don't know how, how thoroughly we want to clean it, you know, so...
Okay.
But, but there was nothing right now that stopped the flow of water. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbury. Uh, website? Mr. Dunbury's?
Uh, yes, the, um, dates and events were always posted, as well as any thank yous that need to be put up. I am still waiting on minutes that we can post on to the website because people do ask. Uh, I have been collecting emails for an emergency contact list that would be used only in case of a, uh, emergency that we get to contact everybody. Uh, there will be a newsletter page on the website, uh, that will have current events, so that the bullet, we call it a newsletter, so that people can click on it and vote to it and realize that's all the news is. Um, we'll also start posting some short descriptions of what takes place at town meetings and the ordinances and different kind of laws that were passed, just so people get an idea of that there is something, you know, out there. Uh, and we will also, okay, that, that's it, okay, I put it together in one sentence.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, now we turn to Mr. Gunning.
Um, I have been indicating that I'm working on a e-verify policy and procedure ordinance. The state, as you know, keeps amending the laws that we have to follow. Um, I think in the past I had mentioned that in addition to the e-verify, I thought it would be prudent to put the, uh, anti-Iranian government dealing and investment prohibition into that same ordinance. The legislature, uh, last year, effective for July 1st, this year it enacted some laws that, uh, changed the framework for enforcement. So, I'll briefly describe that there's three different titles in the Indiana Code involved in these sections where they imposed a responsibility on the local units of government. Um, one is in Title 36, which makes sense because that's the local government title, one is in Title 5, which also makes state, makes sense because that's the state and local laws. But one, the e-verify is in the labor laws in Title 22, and most of the contract making provisions for local governments are in Title 5, state and local government regulations. And so there's a separate set of enforcement rules for the e-verify that are different from the standard rules for all local government contracts, which is in Title 5. So I thought that I could neatly put that together because I'm also codifying, codifying this in the same ordinance, so that, uh, the users, the, the council, uh, department heads, and clerk treasurer can refer to it easily, and that's made for more work than I have ever imagined. Um, they made some changes in this session of the legislature that becomes effective on July 1st, so I'm trying to wrap that all into one, and I thought I would have it for you tonight, and I don't, and I, I have to reorg, rearrange everything, so I didn't even have a rough draft to present and say pass this on first reading, so you have an idea of what's happening. Um, so I do not have that tonight, I, uh, I don't have any, any other ordinance or resolution, um, to come before you, uh, for this evening, and I can either merge my town attorney report here, or I can just wait till that comes up later in the agenda.
Why don't you go in?
Alright, uh, the components of that report will be that, uh, I am, I'm made aware of the, uh, non-conforming lot situation for Mr. Coffey, and it does present legal questions, many legal questions, that are not going to be found in the code, uh, because the question focuses on, uh, the condition of the land at the time of the plating of the town's flats, the condition of the, the land, uh, at the time that the ordinances were adopted, and the grandfathering concept is not in our code, it's referenced there in one or two places, but it's not explained because grandfathering and land use is a matter of common law, which is the judge-made law, it's a result of, uh, court cases and court appeals that have gone through either the court appeals, or the, uh, state Supreme Court, or the federal, uh, Supreme Court, and, um, all of those new laws are bumping into each other because the federal government, which typically says, we don't get involved in land use issues, it's issued a few decisions in, in recent times, and I'm speaking in a matter of recent months, two decisions that affect this particular issue, so I will be taking that up. I also wanted to, uh, mention, I suspect you're on top of this, but I'll mention it nonetheless, the, uh, the deadlines for budgeting, uh, come up, and the clerk treasurer has to issue the legal notification by October 11th. That notice has to contain the public hearing date, so I don't know if that's been set yet, or if it's being discussed, and the public hearing date, uh, becomes important as to the adoption meeting date, because the public hearing date has to occur at least 10 days before the final adoption, uh, date. That's all in the Department of Local Government Finance Budget Schedule that has the deadline, so you look at the, work your way back, uh, from that, that, that is posted, we're used to looking for things under the State Board of Accounts website, and it's not there, the budget schedule is under the Department of Local Government Finance, so if anybody wants to look at that, or keep tabs on that, that is where you would, uh, you would go to do that. I wanted to mention, uh, a couple other things, one is this is municipal election year, um, the General Assembly has changed a facet of the absentee voting law. I think they changed it because there is, uh, so much advanced voting that is done in the form of, of absentee ballot application. If you participate in early voting, you go to a designated election site, and you actually fill out a, uh, an absentee ballot application, and then you can participate in. But because of that, they, they passed a law that said, beginning with the November 5th municipal election, or any special election held on that day, county election board must receive an application other than those that is part of the early voting procedure, to receive an absent ballot by mail no later than October 24th, that is 12 days before the election, and they note that the former law permitted the election board to receive such applications as the later of eight days before the election, but that's now changed. So if any of you are making, uh, strategic plans or calculus to include, uh, absent voters who are gonna vote by mail, that change is, uh, is important to what you're doing with that. Um, I have not heard back from the Building Commissioner with regard to the line fence ordinance violation, uh, noticed that, that this sort of languishing and, in a partially done state, and I'll, I'll repeat what I've said in past meetings, and note that when we issue a notice such as this, to say, your fence is probably directed in violation of our ordinances, we have a duty to be specific enough so that they know what they need to do to make it okay, whether it's moving it back, they need to know how far back they need to move it. Now, it can be as general a description as outside of the right-of-way, or Chippewa, I think is the, the street that's involved.
But it's the corner right here.
Well, that one, that one we cannot do with an ordinance violation notice, that has a different history, and that needs to be enforced by the county. So in the past, different generations, county board of commissioners and different, uh, county engineers, they either invited us or disinvited us to go to the county board of commissioners and have them initiate that process. What we did in the meantime is we passed a new ordinance provision that pushes back, uh, the, the angle piece on any property, so that includes that one. So we've done that on all properties that have an offending fence like that. Now, if in fact that results in that being the only fence that qualifies, we have provided an equal protection of the law and an equal application of law to all such fences. Uh, but the occasion of the county commissioners ordering them or taking down the fence will create a circumstance that when they go to relocate it, then they have to conform to that new ordinance provision that we enacted. Uh, but, in the, uh, northern fence, we have to have a notice that's specific enough, and so those particulars is what I'm still waiting on from, uh, our Building Commissioner. Um, the last item that I wanted to address is really a question, uh, and I guess I'll direct it toward Councilman Young, and that is, uh, I think you have a list of a half a dozen or more, uh, probable illegal sign locations, and, um, I haven't heard anything on that, so I wonder if you're having the police department or someone go forward with notifications of violations, or?
At the end of that meeting, I gave Bob the, uh, list.
Okay. So, um, and I'm, I'm assuming, Chief, that you have a copy of the ordinance, the new ordinance, so you know, um, to reference that one, that phenomenon, okay? Alright, then that will complete my report.
Thank you, Attorney Gunning. So now we got the grants thing. John?
We've covered part of this, uh, we did the RSP tonight, they coolled the rest, and then there was a public meeting held where they're comparing White Dittery Corridor Restoration on... where they're comparing white district area corridor restoration on July 26th. And we had a good reception for that. And it was a, as Dollar said, it was a beautiful presentation. And I agree with her, they did a wonderful job. And then the people that stayed for the community get-together afterwards. We had a lot of interesting comments, all in favor of it. I didn't hear one person come to me and tell me in favor of continuing what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Now, any communications?
I didn't have any communications. I just wanted to know if anybody contacted Mr. What was his name, Welsh, that was interested in having a community-wide leak pickup? Did anybody contact him? Nobody came into my office to get his phone number, I know that.
Very good. Okay, now return to public comments. Yes?
I would like to bring up the Airbnb's. I know you guys have probably looked it over a little while. And all the answers I get is, "There's nothing we can do about it." Now, in front of me is a piece of paper from the listings. There's a listing on Hertford. And it has house rules, say, "No smoking, no pets, no parties or events." The other one is right beside me on Groveland. And this is how they state their house rules. "No smoking, pets are allowed, parties and events are allowed." Do we or do we not have an ordinance against businesses in this town?
Well, we do have in the code what businesses are allowed.
They are allowed?
Some businesses are allowed, yes, by the code. But they are not the type that would...
Not the type?
Yeah?
I don't think rentals are either.
No, not right, not right. But we, you know, there are businesses that are allowed, but that do not spill over on the, in the streets, if you like.
So for this?
Like, for example, daycare for young children, that's allowed.
So hotels are allowed in this town?
No.
So would you call that being a hotel if it's parties and events?
Well... Mr. Kirman, the Indiana General Assembly passed a law that stated that any city, town, or county that did not have existing...
I understand.
...set of regulations.
I've heard that, I've heard that.
Well, that trunks, that trunks anything that we would do. And because we did not have an existing regulation to regulate those before the General Assembly's deadline, which I think was January 1st, to be the last year or the year before.
To regulate, what are we regulating?
Airbnbs.
Airbnbs?
Right.
Okay.
Residential short-term use and rentals of properties. So we can no longer say that's a commercial use in a residential district. The state legislature has removed that power from this community.
Okay. You're saying that we're calling this an Airbnb? That's...
It's a short-term...
Short-term rental.
Right. And we're not...
And when they include parties and events, does that not take them on the Airbnb as the short-term rentals? That's running out their space to have parties and events?
If that, if that contemplates a cookout in the backyard, then no, we can't. If that constitutes a festival on the grounds, then that would be different.
They're making, they're making money off of this party and event.
Right. And I do not know if the tax law requires them to pay retail tax as a hotel or motel or if it is done under a separate retailer certificate.
Where do we find this?
That would be in the state law, you should have researched that. We could probably call the Department of Revenue and ask them.
Okay. Do we have the power as a town to instate taxes of any kind?
To what? To post taxes?
No, we don't have...
We can't, we can't tax, we can't say that we need to tax on these people, even though they're making a lot of money off of what they're doing?
No, that's the state's jurisdiction. We don't have the ability to do that.
So when we need revenue from this town, of which we can very easily get with all these Airbnb's going in, we could have leak pickup and we could have a lot of different things that go on in this town if we can get the taxes on these so-called rentals.
Right. But that's, that's why the last three years, the General Assembly has been... They had two summits where they had interim study committees. And the lobby for groups like Airbnb and other homeowners and realtors who makes management of those properties a business. They heavily lobbied the state legislature. And that's why they passed the two sets of laws that they have. One restricts the town to inspections for no more than $5.
Can you tell me the names of these, the names and numbers of these codes? So that I can read them and open them real?
The names and numbers of...
Of the codes of that you're talking about?
Yeah, I could get those to you. I don't know that I have them tonight. I guess I have a few. One is entitled 36. It's Indiana Code 36-1-3-8. And it lists what powers, units do not have. And one is the power to impose a tax. That's the whole...
Wait, you mean you say, actually, did you say units? What powers do units have?
Political subdivisions, units of local government.
Okay.
We do not have the power to impose a tax. Indiana Code 36-1-24-10 is enforcement of laws that regulate, prohibit, or limit short-term rentals. And that sets forth what we may regulate, but it limits the fashion in which we can regulate that. We would have to come under one of those limited categories that they list. So you're welcome to take a look at those and, you know, come back to us and try to...
Can I get a printout of that, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I get a printout of it, some more?
Well, I just gave you the citations. You can get that off the Internet under the state webpage. Any number of sources like that. We hope the local authorities do this. Oct, uh, October, so you know, these houses... Well, that is, that's regulated under the Hotel Motel Codes. And that is partly regulated and enforced by the county health department. The other aspects of that are regulated by the Department of Revenue because that's the tax collection. I do not know, a hotel or motel has to keep a registry of all the guests. A number of years ago, I suggested that we might want to pass an ordinance in advance of the state action just to require a local registry so that the police and the fire know, departments know what is going on with the short-term...
Can we still do this?
No.
We can't do it, no?
I don't believe we can, no.
We can't even register the ones that are going in? We can't even have them registered here?
I'm not sure about registration. But if we do a registration and require an inspection and the state through other laws, this was two years prior to the current law, limited that to $5. And again, gave us a short list of things that we could regulate. Under the home rule power, we can do those things now that are subject to regulation by the county board of health. So we'll remove that. It'll become a very complicated matter. We'll through the new law, what we're limited to, to see if we can generate some type of own enforcement mechanism. The real answer to concerns that you have is that if the activities that are occurring violate any town ordinance or any state law, or create a nuisance or result in unkept property that violates our ordinances, then the enforcement of those ordinances that we do have or telephone calls to the county health department is about, you know, what we have and what we should be using. But if they, you know, they have short-term rental and it's to a college group, they decide to have a fish fry...
For three online, then they leave the next one.
On the back property. My sense right now is they could probably do that. If upon the daylight, the break of daylight, the place is a nuisance and it's unkept property. Now, we have the ability to either move against the occupants, and that would become a police matter or building commissioner enforcement matter. Then we could do that or move against the owner of the property.
Now, what I see is happening in these places is the owners are absent legally. This Airbnb is taking care of all property. It's taking care of the guests, the registration of the guests. It's taking care of the cleanliness of the place. It's doing the whole follow-up.
Right, and if it's not them, then it's a local real estate management company that...
Right, because it's happening. I live between Thrill, right now, I live right in the middle of Thrill. And they were going, one day at a time. They come in, they open the cottage up, and then they bring all their friends. Because they now have a one-night stay on the beach. Now they have all their friends, then they have parking violations, everything else. I could call the cops every night and get them over there, but it's not going to do any good because they're leaving tomorrow. That doesn't do a dang bit of good. But then stopping this thing, what's happened? Somewhere, I don't know, we've got to figure out either give a tax on top of that so that we can have some of the benefit or some way or another elongate the stays.
Well, you're right. We don't have, we don't have an entity unconstitutional to try and impose prior experience on the use of that property. So you are left with, you know, calling if there's illegal parking, call the police department and get them over there to issue tickets.
Do other towns have restrictions on it? I've been wondering how many of the cities are starting to step in because it's getting so big. The city are passing one.
The counties and the cities throughout the state of Indiana that are college towns have very extensive regulations on apartments and short-term rentals. And they've had that for decades. Other communities such as town block in Dunes had a very sophisticated zoning ordinance. And it defined single-family residential dwelling zones in such a fashion as it precluded, it was so precise, that it precluded short-term rentals. That case was in litigation for four or five, maybe even more, years. And at first, the town lost in front of the county court. Or I think it won in the county court. The owners of the residents, and in that instance, it was just one homeowner, Lakefront, Lake Shore Drive homeowner, had half a dozen to a dozen short-term rentals. The problem they had was getting, gathering enough evidence. Because most of the time, they didn't have the outrageous littering problem and nuisance problem and traffic, volume of traffic and partying in the use. But the town took the position that it was against zoning ordinance, which it was because of the strict definition that they had. That case, when it went to the Court of Appeals, was held to be, the zoning ordinance was held to be too restrictive. And it was struck down by the Court of Appeals in Indiana. So in that case, the town then appealed to the state Supreme Court, and they won in the state Supreme Court. They also had imposed something like $30,000 in fines. Because every day that the infraction occurred and was allowed to exist, that was a singular event and a singular violation. That case, when it went to the state Supreme Court, the court, A, found that the Court of Appeals had wrong and the town had that regulation in place, and it was a valid regulation. And it wasn't too strict for the means that it was trying to accomplish. But instead, the assignment of fines was not, did not go to a value of $30,000 and their calculation was incorrect. So it cut down the fines, but it upheld the regulation. It was from that case that the Realtor Association and Airbnb and the other similar entities and the local management companies out of places like Hammond and out of places like Michigan City said, "Well, wait a minute. If cities, towns, and counties can do us out of this type of regulation, we're going to be hurting for business. Our business is going to be hurt." Because that's what some of these companies do exclusively. So they went to the General Assembly, in part because of the audit business case, and said, "You've got to stop all this regulation. First of all, it's not uniform. Every community has a different set of rules and regulations." The college towns said, "You can have apartment rentals for the college students, but you can't have for short-term use." That cuts against the grain in our country that says, "People who own property can do whatever they want to with that property so long as they're not violating any other laws." As a result, in the last three years, the General Assembly, in two big bites, did pass these laws that said, "You can't have absorbent fees, and you can't even have inspection fees that meet the actual cost." In this instance, they said that you're limited to a $5 inspection fee per unit. So it's a one-time, if we do a registration ordinance, it's a one-time registration charge. And we can only do that the one time. And unless the ownership changes, the new owner doesn't have to come in and register again. But when they come in to register because of the change in ownership, they do not have to, they are not allowed to be charged an additional fee. So the lobbying that convinced the state legislature to control cities, towns, and counties was very significant. And they put a, they put a block to a lot of our power of authority. So that's what we're left with is, you know, those two statutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gunning. Any other public comments? No? All right, we move to council comments. Any council comment? Well, I have one. Today is a very important day for Mr. Young and myself. It's our birthday.
Happy birthday.
No, I should tell you, I should tell you that August 13, 1939, was a Sunday and it was a Saturday. And two weeks later, without war. All right, thank you.
I think that ad hoc committee...
I think that ad hoc committee, there are four of you out of the five that are here. I think we ought to set a date where that committee is going to meet.
Well, you're probably right. Right now, we are going through, the town is going through what's called engagement, which is prior to an audit. And in respect to that, the auditor just came in this week. I asked her about the committees. Now, it's not committee, but the design, the job descriptions and the tasks. She said it's not mandatory, but it's highly recommended, especially in labor disputes, as to what a person is supposed to be doing in each classification. So we want to set a date. Trying to remember what my calendar does. Do you have a date that you're...
I don't know.
Oh, that's right, you're not, you're right.
I don't know.
You have a particular date that you're available? Can we meet during the day?
I don't know.
They put both of you on, you two.
You're on.
Both of you are on it. I did research with what they call federal government council department, dictionary of occupation titles, I pulled up some of that information. And they have another thing called the FOC code, and they pull up information. And it's very extensive as to what job descriptions for each particular category. And they easily give you average wage. And it was done with 2018, so it's pretty recent.
All right, now a motion to adjourn.
We don't have a date yet. Do you have any, it's a name.
Huh?
It's a name. You're going to have this date.
A date for what?
For the committee to meet.
All right.
Do we want to meet during the day? Is that, date during the day? Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't I see what's on my schedule? Alex, can you meet during the day?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll give you a couple of dates. I'll let you see what's available. And what's in this one, and then I'll pick out.
All right. So, be I have a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Hold, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.